The past year, we've been fortunate enough to have an interim superintendent that has worked diligently with schools and students to really transition in a unique time for our school district. And the board has asked that we create a space to continue to honor Tom. And we're going to be honoring Tom tonight with a watch with a special inscription on it. And I think, as I look back over my story, I remember when I was in 5th grade, I used to go from St. Joe to transition on the bus. And there was always a man standing on the steps that I didn't really want to mess with too much. And it's amazing how about 25 years later, that person comes back into your life and there's still a man standing on the steps that you really don't want to mess with. It's just a different set of steps at a different point in your life. So Tom's been very generous to our team this year, very generous to the students and the teachers throughout Nelson County. And this is very well deserved. So, thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you all. I appreciate I didn't expect this, but I do appreciate the thing. I appreciate the opportunity. You know, it is unique to be able to come home and finish your career and stuff. And you spend 20 years someplace and it is, it is different. And I do appreciate that. I enjoyed the board. I enjoyed working with all of you. I enjoyed the people at the central office especially and how much they meant to me. And I really like them and stuff. I wish I could have done more, always. You never feel like you've done enough in the school business, but I thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to be back and thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
I assume now that you've got grand plans to relax a lot?
For sure. For the next several weeks or months or so, I'm going to take it pretty easy and stuff and do some traveling. We're sharing with Diane and Rebecca, my daughter graduated from law school this last weekend. So, and she also got her appointment to the Air Force for the JAG program, which has been a big deal for her. And so, it's been a good, last weekend was a good weekend. So, thank you all.
I know, I know we all appreciate everything that you've done, Tom. I mean, you know, coming in at a time to kind of help settle things and guide us through some, some challenges. And also, I've heard several times from Superintendent Brown and how much he's appreciated being able to reach out to you over this past couple of weeks now and get some insight from you. I've kind of looked at it as a handing of the baton. You've still been able to hold on to it until he had a good grip and then you said, okay, now start running.
That's right. He gets the next board meeting on his own. He flies solo.
Yeah, while you're sitting on a beach somewhere.
I don't know if I'll be on the beach, but I, yes.
But you won't be sitting in here.
Well, that's true. But he has asked me to do a few things, like I'm going to sit in for him at Thomas Nelson on the principal search, and I'm really glad to do that. I'm going to do the graduations and a few of the 5th grade and 8th grade promotions and things like that. So, I'm looking forward to that.
Somebody gets to complain.
That's right. That's right. When somebody calls, when somebody calls to complain, I transfer them.
Thank you, Tom. So, we'll go on into item number three on the agenda, efficient resource management and 3A, the nursing contracts. Mr. Leather.
We're all going to do this together.
Okay.
I want to introduce, just handing out to you, this is Debbie Hopper with Cumberland Family Medical. Debbie, Tom and I, with our nurse and several staff, we've been going to all the different schools today. As reminders, at the beginning of the school year, when we, the board had asked to add four nurses to the staff, we had also talked about adding a health support option. We were looking at Lincoln Trail District Health Department and Cumberland Family Medical. Lincoln Trail District Health Department no longer will be providing that service for any school. They basically deemed it as a non-essential business. So Marion, Larue, Hardin, and I will not get a contract with them for upcoming year. Luckily, Cumberland Family Medical was someone that we had also that we were working with. They've been very busy with Lincoln County. So, they were a little reluctant about how fast they could jump in and help us because they had to stabilize that. But, we do have Cumberland here now. So essentially, I've given you the histories for where we work. We have a contract that is from Cumberland Family Medical. We have had that reviewed by the law office. There is one small revision still left in there that Tim Hawkins Smith and I, we've talked about. There's a percentage change that needs to be changed, that needs to be revised. Their contract writer was out today and could not get that done. Next week, this contract will be presented to you with a request for you guys to approve. So, I really asked Miss Hopper, like she went through the schools with us, if there's any questions. Debbie, if you'd like to sort of talk about Cumberland Family Medical and if you have any questions.
Just very briefly, I'll just tell you a little bit about who we are and kind of what we do. We are a federally qualified health center, which means we do receive a small portion of our funding from the federal government. We started back in 2007 with one standalone clinic in Columbia, Kentucky. Right now, we have 29 standalone clinics. I have 45 school-based sites as of right now. Starting next school year, we will have 85 school-based sites. So, we are in Adair, Anderson, Casey, Clinton, Cumberland, Larue, Lincoln, Russell, and Wayne. We hope in August, we're going to be starting with Green County, Gary County, and you guys. And then the possibility of also starting in Hardin County in January. So, we, we offer primary care in the school-based setting. So, each one of the school nurses stations, we certify as an OIG clinic, which means inside of that clinic, we can do anything that can be done in a doctor's office other than x-rays. So, we actually have a traveling nurse practitioner who can come in and see students and staff for acute care visits, well child exams, sports, physicals, immunizations, all of course with parental consent. So, you know, we're able to, to offer that in, in the school setting. We'll also be working with the school nurses to provide standing orders for them, to be able to provide over-the-counter medications or different triages, things like that, that the nurses should be able to provide. I think it's going to be a great partnership. This is year five for us in school health, and we started in Russell County. That's where I'm from, so you can't hold that against me. So, we started in Russell County and the superintendent basically called our CEO and said, "We're going to lose all of our school nurses. Is there anything you can do to help?" So, he came up with this model and we've tried it and we've been up and down through different things. We've learned a lot of things in these five years. So, we feel like we have a good model. I will tell you first and foremost as the kids, it's not about the money. For us, we are nonprofit. Anything that, if we do make a profit, we give that back to the district. So, we relook at contracts yearly and if we see that we have made any money or there's been an increase in referrals from school nurse encounters or from provider, we will pay more toward the contract next year. Ultimate goal is that we pay 100% of the cost of all school nurses. We don't feel like that it's the school district's responsibility to pay for school nurses. We feel like that's the healthcare provider's responsibility. So, that is our ultimate goal. We are there in some of our districts already that we've already been in contact with for several years. So, that's our ultimate goal. There's some information in here for you guys. I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I just wanted to give you a basic of who we are and kind of where we're from. We don't have any clinics in this area. Our closest clinic would be Larue County, and so we're not as well-known in this area. But I'm sure you're welcome to reach out to any other school districts if you have questions. I'm happy to answer any questions for you, which I might have.
Before you all ask questions, I want to give you a couple of little things. We will have to revise, or we want you to revise, a school policy and procedure on over-the-counter medication because we will now be under the direction of a doctor and a doctor's order. So, it is legally. They also will assume all liability for the, for the, for all the nurses and what they do and everything. We lose all of that liability by doing this. You also directed us, Robbie and I and Tim, as we looked into this, that to get to a point where we added nurses, we added services, but we weren't spending any more money than we were a year or two years ago. I believe with this contract, I'll let Tim have perused the contract and everything. I think we will be right at that this year, that we added four nurses and she's also going to be working to add a 10th nurse professional or another medical professional at no charge to us to, to do this. It will be right at what we were spending before we added any of the nurses. And we hope that, I hope that when we leave, I leave this program to you all and stuff, when you work through it, in three, four years, it'll be free. It'll be, it'll be free.
Sure. And that's our ultimate goal. So, we do provide the, I'm sorry. We, go ahead.
They do, they have one, they have another option that Lincoln Trail did not have. Lincoln Trail only billed through Medicaid. They can bill through any type of insurance, plus they now are billing Medicaid. So, it's a situation, and this is kind of, the Medicaid's new to them. So, it's a, that's why they're, we're not at 100% today. They have to go through it too. But I think this is a great option for the district. I think it's sound financially and I think long-term, it'll be where it'll be, you guys will have to be thinking about this. And I know we've really bothered you all in the beginning.
So, you've got some questions?
Just a couple technicals.
Ask her.
Let me ask a quick, just like a scenario kind of question. So, from, from what I'm hearing Ms. Brown saying, from what I heard you say, for instance, if I've got a child that is a third grader, you know, pick whatever age level, that, and I've got a, a health insurance that's in today's time, I'll say is the best health insurance you could get, okay? Let's say that there's no copays, I don't have to pay anything, and I know that's fantasy land anymore. If they were needing like booster shots, vaccination shots, instead of trying to figure out, when can I get them into the local pediatrician and taking them out of school, and it would be something where there could be an approval given, where they would be able to do that whether under the supervision of the nurse or the nurse practitioner, whichever it might end up being.
Yeah, absolutely. So, with, with us, because we're, we're a federally qualified health center, for our provider visits, we can, we accept any insurance, whether it's a private insurance, Medicaid, Medicare, or if they have no insurance at all. We also, we have a sliding fee scale and a hardship policy for our patients who can't pay anything. And so, we never let payer mix get in the way of that. Now, for school nurse encounters, we are just now starting to bill school nurse encounters. That's what Lincoln Trail and other health departments have previously billed, has been school nurse encounters. We just got approval through MCOs as of February to start billing school nurse encounters. So, that's a new revenue for us that we've never had before. All we've ever been able to bill is when our nurse practitioner sees a student.
What was that, can we repeat that again?
School nurse encounters?
That's Medicaid. It's a visit.
Right, right. Like, if the students come in to see the school nurse for a visit, say they need, they're coming in and they are, they fell on the playground and they're having to clean out their knee and they need to clean all that up, that would be a visit with the school nurse. It's very, health departments in general have traditionally been able to bill for a lot of things as far as school nurse visits. We can't bill for as many things as the health department could, but there is certain things we can bill for. Now, no, a parent will never receive a bill or a statement or anything like that for a school nurse encounter. Now, if they see our nurse practitioner, if they do have a copay or a deductible or something along that line, they will get a statement in the mail. The school district is never responsible for handling any money or for anything in the billing process. We have a billing team. Yeah, yeah. We have a billing department that handles all of that.
And the reason why I was kind of giving that, you know, imaginary hypothetical scenario there is because, you know, a lot of times we find, whether it's from a parent's perspective, okay, I've got to find a date on the calendar that's free. I know I need to get that visit. And it's not a, not a, an illness visit, but just a well visit.
Yes, absolutely. And that's what, we focus a lot on wellness. That's our biggest push, actually. We've done about 7,000 well-child exams this year.
So, this is that benefit for the parent in those kinds of scenarios. But also, at the same time, you know, the child is, you know, ill, sick, isn't feeling well or whatever, well, you know, the parent, most parents, you know, they'll try everything they can if they need to get to that school, but also an opportunity for that parent, kind of like I, you know, saying earlier, suck it up, I don't know.
That's me.
That's it. Well, let's, let's see how you feel after another 30 or 45 minutes.
Right.
So, it would be something like that, where it is a convenience for the parents in a way, but also it's keeping the children there in school where they, where we need them to be, so that they have the best opportunity to continue their work.
Or determining quicker if they're sick.
That's exactly right.
You know, if they have a sinus infection, we see lots of sinus infections. If they have a sinus infection, they're not contagious. They can stay at school, but they're still able to get that antibiotic that they need. We call that into the pharmacy. Parents are always welcome to come to the visit at the school if they choose to, you know? And we can test for strep, flu, mono, UA injections, all those different things we can do.
But providing a service is trying to make sure that we've got options for the students to be well, for them to be in the schools, unless, like you were just saying, if they really, if it's somewhere they need to leave, whether it's x-ray needs or the case might be. You know, it's almost like a urgent, I don't want to get into this.
It is, it is. It's an acute care.
It's like, yeah, an acute care type of scenario right there in the school.
Yeah, and so we'll have a nurse practitioner available every day. That's 100% at our cost, so that's at no cost to you all.
Right here, it says with appropriate staff.
Yeah, so they will have a nurse with them. So, the nurse practitioner will also travel with a nurse. So, school nurses will just be responsible for school nurse duties. They won't be responsible for nursing for the nurse practitioner. So, we'll have that staff. And then, you know, we'll be, I'll be on staff, I'm here quite a bit. I'm, I'm kind of everywhere right now, but we have other staff that'll be here to help. We do lots of health education also, and that's all free. We do all those things for free. We are all about the kids, honestly, in all that we do.
And I think I also heard you maybe go, probably wrong, say staff access.
Yes, staff are able to see our nurse practitioner. We've seen a huge increase in staff attendance staying higher because we can see staff also.
Because that's the other thing is, you know, as a former classroom teacher, trying to get these plans to get, I might as well just go on to school. It's going to be easier if I just don't want to do that. And then you have a teacher who is not feeling well, maybe doesn't really even need to be there if it's something contagious. So, this is an opportunity to also provide a service to our staff.
Right, seeing right there and prescriptions are all sent immediately. If there needs to be a school excuse or anything like that, we take care of it at that time.
You have some more questions?
No, no, actually, they, you're really good.
The only other thing I was curious about, so in simple terms, of course, there's the nurse practitioner and the nurse, that's, I'll call as a itinerant, a trap.
Yes.
Is there's going to be a school nurse stool at each of the locations that we've got right now?
Yes, all the school nurses will remain that are there. They will all remain employees of the district.
Okay.
And we will just be the medical director, which means we just provide the standing orders. We'll do the training, things like that for them, but they're going to remain employees of the district. We do have the one location where there's a nurse splitting two schools.
Okay.
And...
Is that a close campus environment?
It is a close, it's a field.
Okay.
Yeah, so it is a close campus. Is it ideal? No. In all of our locations right now, we have a school nurse at every school. So, it's, it's not ideal. I don't know, you know, what we can do this first year.
It could be something down the road.
It could be something down the road, but it's definitely something that I want to look into on our end, because I truly believe that every school needs a nurse. And I have worked campuses where I've had to go back and forth, and you're not efficient. You're not efficient. She's got a bunch of diabetics at both of those schools too, which is very worrisome for me, as, as us being the medical director.
Just so you know, we are, we were at nine, we lost one nurse, so we need a nurse over in New Haven, so that would put us back to nine, just to let you know that that position is there. And then what she's trying to look at is this Bloomfield Middle option, if they could fund something themselves.
Okay.
That way, we would have coverage costs, but she's, she has to talk to her.
Yeah, we've got to look at financials, like, you know what, Aaron, because year one, we're going to lose money. It, it's just, it's going to happen. It's just going to happen. But I, I don't feel as comfortable not having a nurse in every location, especially with diabetic students. If there's no diabetics, I wouldn't worry as much, but with diabetic students, I would feel much more comfortable with their means of life, if possible.
I mean, and my, and this is just my personal opinion on the board, is we always like, I always like to look for long-term relationships.
Sure.
So, knowing that it's something that you want to look at in future years, us keeping in mind that, well, this first year, you're negative, but you also looking at it long-term, that long-term, it's going to be what's best for both parties.
And that's what we're here for. We, you know, we're not here for one year and then gone.
Right.
And that's what Mr. Hawkins Smith and I have talked a lot about on the contract, as far as the financials. We like to start conservatively. So, we're never going to go down on what we pay. So, we're never going to come back next year and say, "We're going down on our payment." That's not ever going to happen. We're always going to go up in our payment. So, we want to start conservatively so that we are able to continue to go up in our payment on the school nurses.
No, Ms. Berry.
Two things. First, let's say my child, I want to talk about diabetic child.
Yes.
You all will, let's say they go into diabetic shock.
Mm-hmm.
You are capable, I mean, you'll have provision for to help that child.
Right.
Do you, let's say you have an ADHD or ADD. Do you, can they still give you their meds to keep, like it's going on now? So, there won't, won't be any change?
No, 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 no change in that. Same way that that's always been with the school nurses. As long as a doctor has an order there, we do provide emergency medications such as the glucagon for diabetic or epi-pen for an allergic reaction, dye-stat for seizure. So, we do provide those emergency medications and we do training on that with school staff and also with the nurses.
But there's every day meds you still maintain and you will be watching every...
Correct, yes, ma'am. Same thing it's always been.
That's why.
Yes.
The only, only thing that they do, they offer an option with Narcan if, if the board chooses to want to participate.
That's up to you all. We leave it up to, to each board individually. I will tell you, every one of our districts, we have it right now. It was a hard topic for me, honestly. I went back and forth and I studied and I went to conferences and I talked to many doctors about, about it before we decided to offer it to our districts. So, it's a board decision. That is completely up to you guys on that. The main, other than Narcan, of course, epi, I think most every district wants epi provided. Benadryl, most every district wants that. The glucagon and the dye-stat are your traditional ones, but the Narcan is one that is up in question right now.
Is that one that we need to make the decision as we sign off on the call?
You do not. No, no, no. That's, we, we have that policy and procedure in place in our standing orders. You can choose to use that policy and procedure if you want. We don't have to if you don't want to. That's completely up to you all. Nothing in our contract is, has anything to do with that. So, we, I like to offer that, you know? It's up to you all.
Well, I said, because of what you said, you know, it's up to the board, I thought, okay, is that something we need to be thinking about for next year?
No, 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 no. It's just, you know...
A big decision.
Yeah, so definitely something to think about and it's not anything you have to decide anytime soon. You guys can just let me know what you decide on that and if we're good either way.
Do we have any other questions?
Any other questions?
One other option down the road, probably second year, one thing that they can provide also is a behavior specialist. And that also would be at your expense.
It is, yeah.
And that's something, first year is launching, and the second year, they looked at option up as well.
Well, we want to do this right.
Yes.
We don't want to overload.
Right.
And end up missing some steps along the way.
Sure, yeah. So, I love our behavior health program. I love our medical program and I'm really passionate about behavior health. I have four adopted children and so we, we need behavior health services. And so, I've seen what it's done for my kids. And so, we, we hire licensed professionals. So, it's, it's a master's with an also licensed or on top of that. So, ours, we hire a little bit differently than some places, but that's something we can definitely talk about. Also, our dental program that we do offer too. So, that's, that's a decision you all can make. It's at no cost to the district. We have a 40-foot dental mobile unit that we bring onsite and we see the kids for exams, cleaning, fluoride treatment, prophylaxis, and x-rays if needed. So, it's their yearly cleaning. If they need restorative, we don't do restorative at this time, but if they need restorative, we do refer them back to their, their dentist for that. So, that's something that you all can decide also if you want us to provide. Like I said, it's at no cost to you all, so, but it's something that we do offer also.
I believe, as Mr. Leathers and I have looked at this extensively over this year, these are the, they're giving us the finest medical school nurse facility and care that any place in the state of Kentucky can offer, so I'm, I'm very high on their product.
Oh, please, Jen?
That is something we're working on. We're not there yet. That's the only thing I cannot get a grasp on, but we are working on that because we get that request very often.
I'm sure you do.
Percentage of dental districts that use your dental program?
Percentage of what, I'm sorry?
Of districts that you service now realize the dental program.
All except two. Seven out of nine. So, and then going forward next year, I think all districts, all of our new districts. So, we'll be going into 13 districts, we'll have 85 sites next year. So, we've been, actually been doing dental longer than anything. We started dental back in 2009, so it's actually, we've been doing it longer than we have medical.
Any outstanding reason why those two don't?
They already had someone in place and the two people, places that they had working with, they were able to do restorative work on the kids. So, they were able to fill cavities and do extractions and things like that that we don't have the capability of doing right now. We're working on it and we're getting very, very close to that point, but that's why they stayed with them and I encourage them to stay with them. We don't ever push our services on anybody. It's, if you want our services, that's wonderful, and if we can help your kids, that's wonderful, but it's not, I'm not trying to sell the program. I will tell you, these guys have been very persistent in, in reaching out to us and very great to work with, so I will tell you that. But I'm not trying to sell anything to you. We just want to help if we can and we know the need is here and that's, that's what we're all about.
We appreciate that, Tom. You know, if, if nothing else is said, back over to you, Tom. I mean, if this, you want to look at this, this would be your legacy for Nelson County Schools.
Well, thank you very much. Mr. Leathers has done the vast majority of the, of this and stuff. You all gave us the, go ahead, at the beginning year, you invested in the program. Mr. Hawkins Smith found the money to pay good work and, and I think this is going to get us back down and then eventually, I think, we're going to look at being almost no cost to the district with extremely high-quality services.
There's very few districts in the state that do what we do. We have more sites than any other, not, I'm not bragging on us, I'm just saying, the statistics, we have more sites than anybody else does. So, it's very new in Kentucky. School health has been, you know, other states has been going on a long time, but as far as being able to provide medical services in the school setting, it's new. So, just that you guys are, I feel like we're still on the, on the bottom end of what we're going to do. So, getting you guys in on the bottom end is a great thing. I really do believe, yeah, I really believe in this. This district's been great.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, my, I have my information here, so any questions that come up, feel free to call or email me anytime and I'll be glad to answer any of them.
Great.
Okay? Thank you.
Uh, let's see, moving on to item 3B, tentative budget. Mr. Hawkins Smith, and it may look like it's the Mr. Hawkins Smith Show for the next several items. So, pull up a chair and get comfortable.
I'm not talking fast.
On the tentative budgets, I'll obviously have a document prepared for you all to review in advance, like we always do. I don't have a document for you tonight. I think every other item I have on the agenda, Carla has that information. The tentative budget, we got, this morning when I got in, we, I think it came out yesterday afternoon, I was out, but we got some information on our state care, or state care grant allocations. Well, I just got that today. We had information that was just shared about nursing and the impact that'll have on the budget, and that's good news, obviously. We'll be reflecting that. We have, we've had recent conversation the last couple of days, the last few days for sure, about a potential fifth frisky center that we're applying for. I've got a gentleman with us tonight that I'm going to bring up when we get to insurance. I'm going to, we're going to, you know, we just got insurance totals. That's a big ticket item in your, in your budget. So we're going to be gathering that information over the next couple of days, and by the time that Carla sends that information out later this week, you'll have that document to go with the other documents that you already have. It's like this every other year in May, when you have a legislative session, things just, there's just no information out there until late. Next year, when we come to this, this round of the budget, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll get the information a little sooner, because just the nature of that legislative process, so. But we'll be working through that. I've been meeting with Mr. Bradley on a pretty regular basis on things that we're going to be doing in the district over the next few months. You know, I think later this evening, you're talking about Chromebooks, that's a piece in the budget. So there's a lot of pieces that are, that are still moving, and we'll have those pieces as best we can later this week for that document to be sent out to you. And I remind you, in September, we do the final version of the budget. We know who we're, you know, we will have, anyone who's going to retire will have retired by then, and we will know actual enrollment at the start of school, so we'll have a much better picture in September for that working budget than, than we do today. So that's the state of the tentative budget. We're going to be working on that over the next couple of days and have that document to you. Any questions on that?
Appreciate that, Tom. Then move on to 3C, the insurance selection.
I'll have Mr. Conway, he's right over there. Come on up, sit down for a second, Patrick. Just real briefly, you have, I'm going to let Carla go to the, to the tabulation. Our recommendation, just real simply, is to keep what we have now. Okay, we had a pretty lengthy conversation, you all might recall, last year on insurance. Insurance is one of our biggest ticket items in the budget. Sorry that that's sideways. The, our total, as you can see, that we're going to be bringing in next Tuesday night for insurance in the district is $460,000. We don't have too many $460,000 line items, you know, but it's, you know what your insurance costs in your, in your home life? Car insurance, homeowners insurance, et cetera. It's just, it's, it's something we all have to have, and it is a big-ticket item. You can see that we currently have our package, I call it the package, property liability, fleet, et cetera, with Ohio Liberty Mutual, and that's with First Insurance Group here. When I came here in 98, we were with Eugene Wilson Company, and they were bought by First Insurance Group a few years ago. Our agent has been Kathy Clements since I got here in 98. Kathy does a fantastic job servicing the account. You can see that the total premium is up a little bit, that's because valuations are up. You know, I will tell you all, while you see the note there, in 2010, one of the options we have for insurance, the state sends out to school districts a schedule, okay? If you have a, if it's a high school, it might be $235 a square foot. If it's an elementary, it might be 220 or 217. I haven't looked at those for a long time, and the reason why is because they're inflated, because they want to make sure they've covered it. It's like, it's like overbuilding, or, you know, I know we've talked over the last few years about overdoing things when it comes to HVAC systems, to make sure we can cover it, but you have to pay for that. What, what we've been doing since 2010 is we use an appraisal. KD's regulations allow you to use an actual appraisal, because every 150,000 square foot high school is not identical. Every 2,000 square foot house is not identical. Some might be 300,000, some might be 600,000. So we wanted to get a, a better, a better deal for the taxpayer. We had the appraisal done, and we've saved an average of about $15,000 a year on our premiums since 2010. We lose nothing. We, we have full coverage, we have full replacement coverage, we're just are saving based on the, the way those buildings are valued. Brings me to Mr. Conway and his worker, he represents, or is our agent for our workers' comp insurance with KIMI, and our student accident insurance with Bob McPlosky Insurance. And I will tell you, you all, we may have had this conversation months ago. I know I talked to Mr. Brown about it, and there was an option for our district to self-insure through the state of Kentucky, through the Department of Personnel, and we explored that. We're obligated, I feel like you're obligated, to try to, you know, to explore all those options. I worked with Patrick and got lost information, and I got a quote. And then I went back and shared with Tom the pricing. There was not a big enough difference to justify, in my view, the, the board taking on the risk of going to full self-insurance. If it had been $50,000 instead of what we were paying, that's something you guys could decide. The difference wasn't enough. I shared it with Patrick two or three months ago. Well, I guess a couple of weeks ago, I reached out to our insurance companies and requested these quotes for tonight's meeting, meeting on the 15th. Last year, you can see, we paid 120, just 121 for workers' comp for the exact coverage, using the same payroll totals. Our premium for next year is going to be 102, 136, 19, a decrease of 15 and a half percent. And that's because of the work and the partnership we have with people like Patrick, Kathy, and these others. They work with the carrier, we've been a good customer. We have our mod factor, if you're familiar with the workers' comp, our mod, I think, is .75, which is very good, and so our losses are, are pretty minimal. And he worked on our behalf with KIMI, pretty much knowing we were going to be recommending the renewal with those guys. We weren't going to go with self-insurance, at least not at this time. They still came back and saved the district with $18,800. So I wanted him to be here tonight, you know, to, I wanted to recognize him for helping us with that. It's $18,000 we can spend on other things in the district. And again, Patrick and Kathy, and our student accident insurance, he has as well, the premium is unchanged, as you can see. You know, it's a good partnership, and I think those partnerships with vendors are important to success, success in the district, success financially, and providing those resources for our, our students, so. I think it's, it's good news. Total premium, I really hadn't even noticed this, okay, until just now. It's.
$380.
$380 higher. I don't know what percentage that is of 460,000, but it's not much. So I would just encourage you to compare that to your own personal insurance cost this year and see. I think we're doing okay, and I want to thank Patrick again for, for his work. He's great to deal with, Kathy's great to deal with, so any questions we have on insurance?
It's nice to be able to call across that.
Sure is. I like dealing, when I can, it's nice to deal with people that you might run into in Walmart. You know, it just is.
To thank them.
Right, absolutely.
To be, right?
Absolutely. You know, so, but these guys, they've been very, very good to work with for a long time now, and really appreciate Patrick, Kathy, and our partners, so.
Real quick, just like to thank you all for your business. We'd like to take some of the credit for the reduction, which, our cloud and the marketplace and our relationships, but also Nelson County's loss history on the workers' comp has been excellent. At the end of the day, that's what drives your cost. Good losses, lower cost, bad losses, under cost, so. And Tim's great to work with as well, but appreciate your business, really do.
We thank you.
Thank you.
All right, sir.
Thank you.
Going on to 3D, bond of depository.
This is a formal, well, just a format that we go through. I'll be honest with you, generally, we do this for two years, and we approved, obviously, the switch to West Banko last year, and we're now earning interest. And that's been a, there's a lot of work that went into that, but that's, that's a good thing, and I guess I messed up when I submitted the paperwork to the Department of Education, only submitted it through June 30th of 2018. So here we are again, asking for you to approve it for one additional year. We'll come back again next year and ask for a two-year approval, so you won't have to do this, but every other year, that's what you should, should have had to do this time, that's my mistake. But we'll be bringing that to you next Tuesday night for that approval, so we can submit that to the Department of Education. Any questions on that one?
How long do we go without our interest for our previous?
Six, seven, eight years. A long time, long time. You know, we went about, several years ago, we earned $600,000 in interest one year. And we went from $600,000 in interest virtually the next year to nothing. And it had been essentially nothing for all those years. Now, you know, we had some money invested in some CDs, et cetera, that were earning some interest, but now we're earning interest on our, on our daily deposits above a certain threshold, so that's good. You know, it's a lot of work that went into it on part of the ladies in the finance office, but it's good returns for the school.
What is the return on that interest?
It's about, can I get that number back to you via email or the next? I'm sure I'm going to mess this up. We're going to, we're going to generate about $40,000 to $50,000 in interest this year.
That's generally what I wanted to know.
Yes, about $40,000 to $50,000 that we didn't get previously. So, you know, it's a teacher salary, if you look at it that way. So that's, that's been a positive thing, and again, West Banko's good to work with. We've, we feel good with their relationship as well.
Item 3E, the School Facilities Control and Commission offered assistance with technology.
Mr. Jack, he's real familiar with this. This is the third offer of assistance for fiscal 2018, and the offer is in the amount of, I got it here somewhere, $20,456. You all probably have this memorized by now. We get that offer, we have to match it dollar for dollar. All $40,000 plus dollars go into a fund that we use to buy technology for our students primarily, staff as well, but that's, we, in my 20 years here, we've never not matched an offer 100%. We've always found the money to do that, and we would recommend that we do that again this time. This will be the last offer for fiscal 18.
In 26 years of KES, there's never been a district period that's ever not matched an offer.
Really.
There's never been money left on the table.
Could be.
Okay, now, moving on then to 3A, federal and state programs, financial procedure manual.
This is the same document we talked about last month. We did talk to our friends at KSBA, who handle more policies and procedures. Ms. Berry had requested some changes, we made those changes, and they're in the, that really is the only change that we made. We're going to be asking that you approve this on the night of the 15th as just a, KSBA called it a plan. This is essentially what we've been doing for some time now. Our auditor requested that we have a document, and so we put this document together. We used a template from another district that, that they were happy with. We changed it to fit Nelson County, made modifications to make it fit Nelson County specifically, but we're going to be asking to approve that on the night of the 15th. It won't show up in the procedures or the, but we have a salary book that you all approve. Very simple, just a district document that you've approved, that we'll share with the auditor, that, that will coincide with policy, or company, I guess, policy 4.92. KSBA provided that policy to us. Personally, I prefer one sentence, which is what 4.92 is, verse 34 pages, but they wanted a little more volume to the, to the, to the document, so we're asking you to approve that on the night of the 15th.
It just makes more sense to have the superintendent in there.
Sure, yeah.
Just in case something, well.
Well, they're ultimately responsible.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. Sign off. Thank, uh, thank you for that, and that.
Sure.
I appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, good deal. We'll go on to 3G, athletic training contract renewal.
You, some of you folks that have been around for a while, have, you know, we have a contract with Court for our athletic trainers, and if you go to athletic events, you see these people, and you may know their names, and you may not, but you, you see them. There are basketball games, football games, tennis matches, and things of that nature, and Cody James is the person that's at Nelson County High School. Well, he's been there since 2009 as our athletic trainer. He's not our employee, he works for Court, and this is at no cost to the school district. We have an agreement with Court. They provide these 30 hours a week, they provide them to our schools. Eric Burkhard is the trainer at Thomas Nelson. Eric's been there for six years. Cody's been there for, I guess, nine, Eric's been there for six, they're part of the family. Just athletes, coaches know them. We're asking that you approve this tonight for an additional three years to continue that relationship, again, at no cost to the school district.
That's one of those high demand. I can't remember whether Cody wears a Court shirt or a Nelson County high school.
I think he wears Nelson County shirts.
I think he does, doesn't he, yeah?
I think, I think the young man is.
From the venue to venue over there some days.
And I think the same thing's in place at Thomas Nelson. Again, I'm over here, because this is where my son's attended, but.
He was checking on a parent who was due to delivery moment at a softball game the other night. Wasn't even a student, he was checking in on the parents, so.
You know, those, those guys put in a lot of time. The contract calls for 30 hours a week, and three years, we've not been billed for overtime. They don't bill us for time. It's in there, but we don't get, realistically, that's not going to happen. And again, it's a very positive relationship, I think, between school district and Court, and I think it's been a win for both parties, and we'll be recommending that to you next Tuesday night.
And that'll be a three-year.
Be another three-year contract, yes, sir. Mr. McKay has reviewed that contract. We tweaked it a time or two at his request, and, and what you have there is the filed document that will be bringing to you Tuesday.
We do appreciate this call.
I hope Cody's going to be at the meeting.
Sure.
But I hope Cody's going to be.
We'll see if we can get him there.
Do you need an adjustment or something?
No, I'm so happy. You came to the last one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Moving on to number four, item four, college and career readiness for a one-to-one technology implementation, Ms. Chanel. Your partner in crime is not here tonight.
Oh, no, he's not here. That's okay. I think I've got him pretty much well-covered. Hopefully, I'll be able to answer all your old questions on the technical side of things. So what you have here is basically a one-to-one proposal for this upcoming school year that will be rolled out into a four-year plan. And so I'm just going to go over the highlights. I don't want to read this for you, because obviously you can read. So, let's start, we're going to go through two parts. The more logistical part, and then we'll go into the leadership development part. Logistically, we're estimating about $300,000, $300,000 being spent on devices and pilots, and those devices will be distributed to all third, sixth, and ninth graders across our district. And then also, we are going to have one pilot, K kindergarten class, and one pilot first-grade class that are going to be receiving touchscreen Chromebooks, and so it'll be easier use. So we're going to pilot that, just to kind of see how it goes at that grade level. And then we're also going to pilot with, with teachers as well. We're going to do 10 elementary, 10 middle, and 10 high school teachers that are willing to step out a little bit in the future with their classroom and get rid of their desktop, go to Chromebooks and Chromebits for protection, and, and then Bluetooth speakers. So that is what you're seeing there reflected on the budget side of things. You can see that there, the 11-inch Chromebooks for the second through eighth grade will be purchased, and 14-inch Chromebooks for the ninth through 12th grade will be purchased eventually. So we will, how this will work is we will just roll every year. So we'll buy every year, third graders, every year, sixth graders, every year, ninth graders, and then they will carry them with them, three to four years, depending on what grade level that they receive them at. So that's more of the logistical part of this implementation plan, and that's more of a Jesse, a Jesse part. Also, the help desk, you wanted me to mention the help desk. How are we going to keep up with the repairs or things like that? Right now, successfully, Thomas Nelson is, has their own student help desk, where kids bring a Chromebook that has been broken, and the STLP kids fix it and get it back out to them. Um, so you talk about student leadership right there. That's a great opportunity for those kiddos. So what we are going to be working on is creating that in the middle and high school, um, levels, and then for the elementary, our library media specialists are going to be, um, in charge of the, not in charge of the repairs, but just kinda being the hub for storing them and things like that until our tech department can get over and get them. We are also higher, um, going to be, um, having two student workers that'll be co-op in with us starting in the summer, um, half-day, and will have all the way throughout the school year. So they will be able to help our tech department with, with that as well. Um, so that is kind of the technical side of it. My side of it, which I really like to talk about, um, is the instructional part, um, and the leadership development part. I have started, um, based on reflections and observations and feedback, I, I feel like I've started some great things, going with some programs, um, and moving forward, we're gonna continue with those, but one additional thing that we're gonna add is, um, an Ignite Academy, and that is going to be for, um, depending, it is up to, uh, the school administration whether they wanna send their whole team that's being one-to-one, given, given one-to-one, or, um, or just one, um, one teacher out of that team, um, that will have a one-to-one classroom, and then also the library media specialist and instructional coach, or slash admin. So, um, but I have worked really hard on exposing our staff and our students to just tech tools in general. My focus this year is going to be more on the instructional strategies of how you take those tech tools and you implement them, um, to empower students to lead their own learning. So, um, and that's across, across levels. So, that's the instructional, instructional part, um, in, in a nutshell. Of course, I could talk about that for days, but, um, so do you guys have any questions for me? Any questions?
Okay, the elephant in the room is the three hundred thousand dollars for me. How's that, where do we get three hundred thousand dollars?
Okay, so what we did is we actually took, and Tim, you're more than welcome to jump in if you want to, um, we took, uh, the current enrollment, um, and as of last week, all third grade, all, um, sixth grade, and all ninth graders, and it was about nine hundred seventy devices-ish, um, and then we've added on, uh, the, the pilot, the two pilot programs, so the pilot program for the K one class, so that was fifty additional Chromebooks, and then also the, um, pilot for the teachers, which is an additional, um, thirty Chromebooks. And then, um, one thing that we're looking into is, um, a part of that is there's a software that, um, that is called Go Guardian, and basically, um, based on our, um, conversations with other districts that have rolled out one-to-one, they, um, suggest a software like this. We're still looking, um, we're, you know, we're still seeing if there's somewhat, something cheaper, you know, we're, of course, we are very conscientious about, uh, the budget, but basically, Go Guardian, what it does is if the device leaves, if the device leaves the county, or we get, we get word that the kid has moved counties, we can automatically shut that device down where they can't log in at all. Um, it has been brought, uh, to our attention that there have been, um, some instances and situations in other counties where the parents will actually go to the pawn shop and try to pawn. The device, a pawn shop's not gonna take a device that says, "This device is disabled, please return to Nelson County Schools." So, um, that's one of the features of Go Guardian, so that's, that's about thirty-five thousand dollars worth of, um, now, that is not just for the thousand Chromebooks, it would be cross-school district, all Chromebooks.
No, that's what I'm saying, where, where are we going to get the three hundred thousand in the budget?
Are you asking us for three hundred thousand dollars to come up?
Yeah, are you asking us for that kinda money?
Yeah, we have, uh, it is my understanding that Tim has already brought to you all's attention that we would be doing this?
We've, we've talked, we've talked about one-to-one, yeah.
Yeah, but I didn't know the three hundred thousand dollars.
I'm like, yeah, yeah.
I guess you did.
Okay, I'm like, I'm like, I think so.
So, yeah, there's a couple things, that, that long-term, it will be more than that, but, but Tim, I think in the draft budget that you brought, there was a line item that you've kind of referred to that depending on how budgets were playing out, that you would like to have that for this?
And we've been building tentative budgets, uh, knowing that, uh, that's really the last chance you've got before the start of school, uh, and, and there's so many items there, uh, additional costs and savings that if you, if I went back and looked at my Google sheet, uh, but, uh, but we have talked about that. I, I don't remember the exact, maybe it's been multiple meetings about Chromebooks. We may not have ever come up with a...
No, we never...
The exact number.
Yeah.
But I will tell you, uh, in talking to Jessie and Jamie this morning, I think one thing to think about, it's, it's three hundred thousand dollars, but we're gonna spend less elsewhere over time by going to Chromebooks. Now, we don't know, um, we don't know, uh, exactly what those numbers are, but for example, if you've got two or three computer labs in, in every school in the county with thirty computers in each one of those, over time, every kid now has their own device to walk around with. We spend a fortune updating computer labs in the district. We've got a lot of money in computing, and the time that we did that, that was, that was a good decision for the district. This is just the next, I guess, generation of technology in a school, or in our school district, um, and, uh, you know, so we do have that, that, that figure will be reflected in that tentative budget document you get later this week, and I'm, I'm very comfortable with that. I'm confident, uh, that we'll be able to, and that's, that's why we have a plan that's where you're spending a consistent amount, uh, over, over the life of the, of the program. It's why we didn't come to you and say, you know, hey, we've been coughing away money over here, we wanna buy a Chromebook for every kid. That would've made a lot of people happy, but then in five years, four years, three, you gotta buy them again. So what we're doing is you have, you're setting aside an amount that you'll need to budget annually, and in, what, four years? Every kid in the district will at that point have a Chromebook.
You're, you're talking about an operational budget line item.
Right.
In essence, it's something that we, whether we're talking about diesel, I'll use diesel fuel as an example, 'cause that's one we always end up, uh, you always end up bringing up every year with the budget, is we budget every year for that cost, just like what we, and honestly, this is what every school district needs to be doing, is they need to be budgeting technology refresh as an operational cost, because what we're finding across the state is that a school district that doesn't take that approach, all of a sudden, like, six years, seven years ago, I forget when it was, whenever we had to go to that in-computing solution, we were rapidly finding that pushing ninety percent of our instructional devices in the district were six years or older, uh, and at that age, they have aged out of really their value and what can be used. So, do we end up spending the same or more money for replacement of those in-computing labs, or do we take those same dollars and just reallocate them towards starting a one-to-one initiative where after four years, you said, uh, the same amount of money will have been spent, but it's every year, an operational budget line item, and then every student grades three up and potentially even in the lower grades?
Correct.
Have some piloting of devices as well?
Yes.
I mean, is that, is that kinda what, that's the most...
It is, but I, you know, this is not something you gotta find, you don't have to, it's not, you don't have to go find this money. We have been working towards this for some time now, build this in.
I have a hard time with it. Why I have a hard time with this is because, for instance, we didn't buy buses this last year.
We either do this or we lose kids.
I know, but I'm just saying, in my mind, I'm just saying, um, that's my concern. I don't have any problem with the three hundred. If we hadn't have not, we, we didn't do what we normally did, we didn't take the buses, we didn't, you know, we cut out a bus route, we've done all we can, and then this comes up, and it's like, okay, it's like, wow, three hundred thousand, and we missed out buying buses, six buses. Do you know where I'm coming from?
But we, we fully intend, the budget's also gonna have six buses in it, you know, so there's, we're not gonna not buy buses again. We, we had other things that happened this year that resulted, you know, that's, that...
But you know where I'm coming from.
Sure.
That's where I'm thinking, what things we didn't do last year as opposed to the good things that we want to do, but what we didn't do, that's what concerns me. I, I want us to be, uh, high-tech too, and I want us to be the best in the state, but I'm just thinking about budget-wise, what we didn't get done last year and what we're doing differently this, this time. That's, that's what I'm thinking. I'm sorry, but that's the way I'm looking at it. I, I'm thinking the kids need, we needed buses too, and we didn't get those last year. I'm just concerned about that part. I don't wanna cheat anybody, I don't wanna, um, you know, I don't wanna put a damper on anybody's plan, I'm just looking at what we didn't get done last year, and we didn't do it.
Well, did we suffer because we didn't have the buses?
Uh, I'm sure we have old buses, uh, I mean, Mamis can tell you, we got seventeen-year-old buses.
Did they get to school and back?
I, I don't know, all of them didn't get to school.
But did we have any greater problems than anybody else? I'm saying, if we suffered, if there was suffrage because of not having the buses, I could understand, but I don't think, there's, I think the buses are planned for this year, and this was also been planned for, for this year. It's one of those, that, I mean, that was my understanding, is, um, maybe I misunderstood that, but I thought this was something that we had planned for, the bus was a one-time, the not getting buses was a one-time deal, because we had some, should we call, natural events in some buildings that had to have...
Well, that's what I'm saying, we, we had to spend money.
Right.
Yeah, we had to spend the money, and I don't have a problem with that, but if you put this in a priority, uh, against a computer, and I know people see things differently, but computers and a bus to get kids to and from school, that's, that's why, that's my thinking, you know, I'm just thinking about...
And, right, I'm on the other end, 'cause if they have a computer, they don't really have to come to school, they've got it at home.
Oh, I want them to come to school.
Yeah, we still want them to come to school.
I want them to come to school.
When it snows, everything else, I'm looking at it from a different angle.
Yeah, the, the technology will never replace a good teacher. In fact, one of the best comments I heard of was Dr. Back and, uh, and UK who said, "Technology will never replace a teacher," but it will replace a teacher that doesn't understand how to leverage technology. Um, but let me ask you a couple questions on this here, so, um, and of course, I, I look at this through a different set of lenses, uh, because of my...
For your own knowledge.
Yeah, because of my pay, the job that actually pays my bills, not the roughly, what, fifteen cents of, an hour we seem to get sometimes if we calculate out the amount of time we put in as board members. Um, looking across districts that have done similar types of things, I, I see what I would call little bits and pieces of Boyle County and little bits and pieces of, uh, Marion or Woodford, so it looks to me like what has happened here is that between you and Jessie and whomever else, having talked and, and looked back and see what succeeded and what didn't succeed in other areas, not recreating will, taking the best pieces of it, and as I'll call it, throwing it in the blender and hitting parade, and then having this nice drink that we can drink from. Is that kind of where, this, this has kinda been developed out of over the last little bit?
Sure, sure. We, um, put together a one-to-one committee, um, I would say about five months ago, um, and, uh, we traveled to some different, um, districts and got feedback from districts that are one-to-one, and, um, we did, we saw some great things that would work, that would work a little bit here and a little bit there, um, and that's what we've kinda compiled this into. Uh, and so, it was not just a me thing or a me and Jessie thing, we had, um, input in, from our, from our library media specialist, our teachers, and our principals, um, at all levels, um, and then the directors, um, were also in on, on the committee, uh, and so, um, yes, that is what, that is what you're seeing.
Okay, the, and, and this is, I mean, you may have heard me say this before, and if not, just ask Susan Taylor, the CEO of Boyle County, okay? Uh, 'cause we got her in trouble one time.
Uh-oh.
Um, you know, the, to me, the easiest thing that any school board can do is write the check. Yes, now, you know, as, as Barry was saying, that, you know, we, we've always gotta be concerned about, uh, spending funds, especially whenever we start seeing dollars like this.
Sure.
But that is the easy part, but the hardest part is always making sure that, um, from a preparation of implementation, from a support model during, at once you've got it on the ground, uh, and then also being able to support the teachers, and, and thinking back to something that you said, whenever you got done talking about the boring stuff of logistics, uh, and started talking about your wheelhouse, the things that you're passionate about, it sounds like, uh, there are things that you've started to build in your first year here in the district that can help support the teachers so that they actually have a success with the instructional tools in their classroom.
Yes, so absolutely, and that'll be, that'll be definitely some things, that'll be some things that I continue. Um, I go to almost every school monthly and do a Rock and Road Rally where I just take three tech tools and just introduce them to, and it's just like, based on what level they are, they take it and they go back and implement it. It is the coolest thing to be able to walk down the hallways and look in a classroom and see them implementing the day that I just have showed it to them. Um, but without that technology there, they, they, they can't, they can't implement these, and they're looking at me like, going like, Jamie, this is great, I love the stuff that you're sharing, but there's one Chrome card for a hundred kids, and I'm like, okay, I get it, I understand, let's do with what we have, make the best, make the best possible. Um, so, yes, that, that, there are already some things that are in place such as that. Um, another one is NCS Ignites, um, which, what, is a cohort of teachers that, um, I put together this, or that actually willingly said, yes, I wanna know more, I wanna come, I wanna learn, after school hours, I'll devote two hours a month for that, and, um, you'll be, they'll be recognized at the meeting on the, on the fifteenth. Um, and one of probably my proudest moments, and I'm not saying this to brag, but I had, um, and Ignite get up and do her culminating, show her culminating project, and she said, "You know what? I've been teaching thirty-plus years, and until this year, until you came in the district, I thought I was fine, I thought I was okay, and then I realized that I wasn't." And so, just, just knowing that there is a difference, and there are teachers that are out there willing, they know that, that this is coming, this is our, this is our community, this is, we need to prepare these kids, um, for, for what they're gonna face, period, and so, um, but...
You may comment about that students own their learning, and there's probably some of us in this room that if we've ever had to change a headlight or a taillight on our car, what's the first thing that we typically do?
Uten.
Uten.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and that's the same approach that students take nowadays as well.
Yes.
Is they, they own their learning to a degree. The, um...
I didn't have that put there.
Was there a question or...
No.
Okay, um, and so, um, you know, that, that's the key in this too, is that I, I would think that we don't want students, or teachers just to believe, well, we got the technology, so now let me just use it a little bit. I mean, it truly is, one of the things that I think we would have to expect out of this is that it changes the way we learn, and as staff, the way that we teach as well.
Correct.
The incubator for changing the way our educational environment is.
And that's where the leadership development comes into play. Yes, yes, that is exactly where it comes into play, um, and so, yes, that, and that'll be something, um, the Ignite Academy will focus on. Um, you can see over here under instructional vision, these are all student-led learning, um, ideas and strategies, instructional strategies, um, so, I mean, that, that the kids need, problem-solving, they, they need that, they need to know that they're going to fail, and they have to step up and overcome it, and, um, I was just in a classroom today with passion projects, and I, there was a, a fourth grader that had her passion project on training her dog. Well, her presentation's coming up, and she thought, well, I need to bring in my dog, I've never thought about this, kinda thing, and, and so, I said, well, email Ms. Victory, email her. And she was like, email her? I can email? And I'm like, sure, why not? I think that's great, I think it's purposeful, I think it's great. So she emailed Ms. Victory, and she came back, and she was just a flap in her arms, "I got an email, I got an email!" And that made me so happy, um, and so, anyways, but Ms. Victory said, you know, because of, because of reasons that we can't control, that's out of our control, you can't bring in a pet, and she was like... And I'm like, no, remember, we face hurdles and we jump over them instead of just backing up? And she was like, well, I did create videos of them, I guess I could share the videos. There you go. And so, yeah, so, so that's what I'm talking about with these, um, and, and creating these, um, these future-ready, ready students, um...
Well, I said, student standard is student, um...
Oh, yeah.
Um...
And they care so much more about things that are, that they have ownership of, absolutely.
I mean, some, some of the things that I've seen, whether it's at some high school or top of Nelson or some of the elementary schools that have been posting through social media, of their use of the technology for it to be authentic learning. Uh, one of the most recent ones I remember was, uh, one of the high schools doing Google Hangouts with Coffee Creek.
Yeah.
And it was French students...
French students.
...talking with the students, and, I mean, I just saw a picture of it on social media, but it was, looked like it was elementary students crowded around the Chromebook, having that Google Hangout video conferencing essentially, with that high school student about...
Learning French.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I still don't, Tim, help me out here, uh, how did we come up with the three hundred thousand dollars? Just sort of help me here.
Well, there's, there's so many bits of detail, but I'll give you one couple that I think...
Yeah, give me, give me some help here.
The, uh, for example, the, uh, all the eleventh-hour activity in Frankville, our legislators, uh, you probably heard me, remember me saying many times about the CERS matching rate, and how that was gonna cost the district about four hundred thousand dollars... that was going to cost the district about $400,000 more next year than this year.
Yes.
We don't get a pencil, we don't get any of these little nice little books or anything. We get nothing, but people do get a sound pension. It's pretty important. Well, one of the, one of those 11th-hour changes is a phase-in of that increase. So instead of 28% on our classified employees, we're going to pay 21.48.
Yes.
The difference between those two percentages alone will buy those Chromebooks. Okay? I will also tell you, this is something, we were going to try to figure it out, we'd figured it out before that. But there's a lot, there's so many things that have happened just over the last few weeks. I know another thing we're going to be including, this is not what we're here to talk about, but I think this will be of interest to you, is you all, I know all of the board members have expressed concern over the, when we reduce the amount of money we give schools for their supplies, the site-based allocation. Mr. Bradley started last Tuesday, I would say it was last Tuesday, he said, we got to figure out a way to get that back to the full 3.5%. Schools, it's not like they have excess cash lying around. Well, we're going to be recommending that in that tentative budget that comes out next Tuesday as well. So schools are going to get an increase there, and it's because of some of those changes. The seat base actually went up a little.
A little, yeah.
Not much, but it's a little bit. So that's helping. There's a lot of things that are helping. We lost PD money. We're going to have to make that up. But there's a lot coming in and a lot going out, and that's what I'm going to be doing over the next couple of days, to try to get that document to you guys for the board meeting next Tuesday. But I am very confident that we're in a position to be able to go to this one-on-one program. Very confident. I will tell you, I got a call last week, principals are chomping at the bit to get these devices in the hands of kids. I've been trying to hold them off, honestly. If you'll wait, I think the boards, we're going to approve a budget, well, we're going to help you with this. So that fundraiser can be for something else, not for Chromebooks. We want to provide them to the schools.
I do too. I just want to know how we're doing.
Yeah, but that...
I mean, that's a logical question.
Sure, absolutely.
Because I've got to answer to people, why do you, why are we able to do this and not that?
Right. But the CERS change, just that one thing, if you add to that the C increase, it's minor, but it's, you know, some money to us. Those two things easily pay for those Chromebooks, just in those two things. There's a lot of other ins and outs, but just those two.
Well, the other is probably small things too.
They are.
But small things add up to large things.
Right. But very confident we're in a position to be able to do this.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
What's the ratio now of Chromebooks to students by school? Do we know?
Okay, so we actually did a very thorough inventory of what, of what the schools have, and it varies. There are some schools that the ratio was like six, six to one, 10 to one. Like, I can send that, I can definitely send that sheet where we...
I'm just wondering what the worst of that, so if one school's 10 to one, whereas another school is maybe three to one.
Because I don't want to tell you something incorrect. So let me look, and then I'll let you know. Absolutely.
I'm just wondering how it varies across the district, and how the schools that are three to one, how they got to be three to one while another school's 10 to one. Because where my issue comes in is the equality among schools that perhaps, some schools have been technology-advanced, have made the effort in the community to provide their kids with Chromebooks at three to one, and another school perhaps hasn't, and they're at 10 to one, is that really equitable for everyone to be in that process? So I think that it would be more equitable for perhaps, and easier to swallow for the school that's three to one. Because I think it happens to be the one that I represent, that they would perhaps go first. That they should be rewarded for their foresight of fundraising and trying to get their kids the ratio lower, realizing that, that maybe they would be considered higher in the pile. That's my thought process.
Okay. And I respect that. I will tell you, when we completed the inventory, Chromebooks have a lifespan of about five years, okay?
At the outside?
Yes, yes. And then, it's not necessarily that they lose functionality, that they lose battery life. And there's nothing more frustrating for a student, trust me, you know, coming from a one-to-one classroom, that, you know, you're walking around with a dead Chromebook, you know? So, so with the, within those numbers, we actually, we only allotted for Chromebooks that are, I want to say, four years or less, which Jesse did the numbers. So, like I said, so if they have, if they have older Chromebooks, we didn't take that. So when you see those numbers with those ratios, is what I'm telling you, that when you see those numbers, you're going to think, oh my, this school has, I know they have way more technology than what we're seeing, but we actually took those Chromebooks out, the ones that are older and are certain.
What do you do with those models?
We're actually going to be, we're still going to be using them. So they will have the options, parents will have the options to either, and in schools, will have the options to keep them as day users. So some parents won't want their kids to be able to take them home. So there will be day users. Let's say a kid comes with a cracked screen. You hand them yours, they, you know, they take it, then they get one of the replacements until yours is ready. So it'll be, they'll still be utilized.
Is some allowed to buy them? If they're unusable, what we consider unusable, but I've had a computer longer than four years and worked.
There'd be challenges with surplus laws.
Oh, there would?
Yeah. Because it's public property, and with surplus laws, you have to go through open bid processes, or sealed bid processes, I'm sorry.
It's like when somebody buys school property.
A school bus, yeah. A school bus or desks or anything that has been deemed, well, like what we would do with facility even, that's deemed surplus.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Appreciate it. Moving on to item number five, Professional Growth and Effectiveness. Five A is Certified Evaluation Plan Updates. Ms. Williams and Ms. Newton.
Use intro, Emery.
I'm going to turn that over to our 50/50 chair, which the business is.
Tag, Chris. There's a little context, a transition there, though, how she became the 50/50 chair. Can you talk a little about that journey?
Mr. Morris, when he sort of stepped down, he was the 50/50 chair as the HR director, and when he stepped down, he sort of designated Courtney as that chair. And so she sort of finished this out for the year, and she's done a nice job with that. So I'm going to let her present the final product.
All right. So last year, a Senate bill was passed that gave us a lot more flexibility for what the CEP would look like for the districts. They left a lot up to the districts to decide how we wanted to use the evaluation system. So the 50/50 committee decided to invest that energy into the teacher evaluation framework primarily. So there's a lot that's written in the CEP that you won't see that's changed as far as the verbiage of the CEP, but the tool and the vehicle for the evaluations, what we invested a lot of our energy in the changes. So the teacher evaluation framework process, we changed that as a committee to be a little bit more collaborative between the evaluator and the teacher. So the focus is not just on the ratings and the evidence, but it's on goals, it's on reflection, and it's on action steps that teachers are going to take to make progress. So one change that we did make was the reflection process, used to be a long reflection process in the beginning of the school year. For those of you that saw that, it was about five slides long, and it had to be done by the very beginning of the school year. We changed that to be an ongoing process, understanding that that's more impactful when you're speaking with your collaborator to say, this is what I want to work on, this is how I'm reflecting in an ongoing manner. So reflection shouldn't be a one-time and done thing, it should be ongoing throughout the whole year. So that's one change that we made. In addition to that, after the evaluator is in the classroom, they leave the feedback on the framework, that teacher will have five school days to then go and put their reflection. So we felt like a timeframe was necessary for that as well. Besides that, we don't have a lot of changes with the verbiage. So this is an example of a piece of the framework. So you can see that instead of the slides with the indicators and the evidence there and the highlighting, there's indicators on this side, there's living collaboration. So this is an example that me and one of the teachers put into this framework where I would go in on the feedback, and that teacher would go then and reflect. So it would be an ongoing script of both the feedback and the reflection that a teacher has. And then you can see here, in a meeting that I might have with that teacher, we would talk about the evidence there. They would identify a focus from the indicators, and then they would say, here's my action steps in the next three weeks or four weeks to make progress on this. So instead of once every now and again talking about it, it's an ongoing process. So that's the big change that happened in the CEP. The other frameworks, you won't see a lot of changes in because it took a lot of effort and energy on the committee's behalf to change this, so.
So more of a living document versus a years one time, and then I set it back over to your file over somewhere?
Yes, because right now, PGS feels like, here, we're going to do this, and then two months later, we're going to do this, and two months later, we're going to do that. It doesn't feel like that anymore. It's ongoing.
Any questions?
So, Emery, would you just plug this document, save your approval?
Yes. At our next meeting, I'll just ask for your approval of the CDP. We will send it into the state at that time. Of course, they will have an opportunity to make any revisions, to make sure that it meets the state regulations. Of course, if they give us any feedback, we have to make those changes. We'll bring it back before the 50/50 committee. Then we come back to you, of course, at the June.
Yeah. One thing I've tried to make sure to do is I've been collaborating with Todd Davis at KDE, because in lieu of Mr. Morris stepping down, I wanted to ensure that we are still following all the rules, because there's a lot of freedom with the rules. And so with that, you want to make sure that you're following the steps. So he's taken a look at everything, and he says it looks good, it should be good to go.
What you're saying is we don't want to have to have a tennis match with KDE, and what he did back does, and we make some changes and hit it back and so on.
Right. So we should be good. Last time I heard from him, he said we were good to go.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Appreciate it. Moving on then to item number six, Student and Shareholder Engagement. Six A, Central Office Reorganization. Superintendent Bradley.
First, I want to say, first, the first five days is the first 10-day plan. The first five days, people have been very generous, and not only with their time, but their care, and it's been a nice transition. I've been able to just spend some, the first 30 minutes of the day with my Care and Connect class and transition. It's been a very nice transition this past week. This document, the first 10 days, these are some outcomes from the first 10 days. And I think for the next really 90 days, I want to continue to share with you, sorry, yeah, I want to continue to share with you progress on those 30, 60, 90-day plans. One of the things that I was able to do was really sit down and look one-on-one with all central office staff and today in small groups to continue conversations about the priorities for the district as laid out in the blueprint document that I shared with you in the interview process and continue to discuss. One of the key pieces, if you look down at shared leadership, I'm looking closely at job descriptions and current systems reality in our system around human resources, also making sure that I maintain transparency about those goals, and really looking closely at the plans and human resource alignment to those goals. So over the past two days, I've started talking more targetedly about a reorganization process here at the central office, and I want to walk through that. So the, if you look back at the wall with Tim and Tom, you've got the two kids there working on the, working on world readiness. You look at our district mission statement, this is, this is that same statement, just on this piece of paper and a little more colorful. But as we look at that statement, this is really the purpose around how we think and how this is framing allocation of resources. So ways that we're inspiring, enabling, preparing students to be successful in our society. And as I've laid out these values and priorities over the last few months, in my planning, they really called us to think about how we're aligning resources within our organization. And additionally, I think it really forces us to think about the conversations we're having around the purpose that our roles play. And as we look at student outcomes, if you take a look at page four, which, if you didn't get to see the hedgehog, as I shared over the, I shared late last week, so the hedgehog really represents maintaining a strong focus. And if you take a look at the student outcomes on page four, talks about these three key pieces that are part of the student leadership profile, as well as a part of the priority group that we've talked about with Nelson County Pride, Inspired Student Leadership and Learning. So, Community Health and Engagement is a, is something that we as a district, over the last year, have had a lot of conversations around, in the conversation around school safety. As you'll see in here, my recommendation for a Director of Community Health and Engagement really focuses on putting resources under a common umbrella, and that umbrella unites resources under a coherent model for taking care of students. It also unites resources more intelligently around the way we share information about those students. In the same sense, the conversations I've had over the past six months, and with you as a board, we've talked deeply about workforce development. And we think about the relationship between schools and our community, and the reality and the demands of the workforce are a huge priority. And as we think about the need to continue to expand our workforce opportunities, this role would be a very significant priority in making sure that occurs. Lastly, as we think about Inspired Student Leadership and Learning, something that we know, in the world, we've just had the conversation about Chromebooks, that's a part of this conversation, but it's really bigger than that, in that we think about the purpose of school. And we're having a conversation around experiences in our classrooms from P12 that allow us to think, how is it that we're allowing students to live a life that's going to inspire and enable them to be successful when they leave us? So, these are essentially the three priorities of this reorganization, in addition to operations, which is currently in place. If you take a look at page five, you'll see these roles. So, in the blueprint document that I've shared with you all throughout the process, and as we look at the backpack conversation that we've been having, the correlation between these goals and these roles are very unified. So when we talk about inspired students that are socially, emotionally engaged, that directly feeds into this team and this pattern around community health and engagement. We look at community partnership, mentorship for students at schools, and work experiences and skills. The workforce development role is directly connected. As we look at early college and career, and really creating a space for students to be inspired to learn and own their future, that's the Director of Student Leadership and Learning. Throughout the process, as you guys know, I've continued to push the envelope around the way we think about our role. And as we think about this process, and you look at student outcomes in the pyramid, in student leadership profile, these roles direct connectedly to student outcomes. The, as I've said as well, the intentions in this visioning document are not modest, and with that, they require a great deal of resource. One of the key pieces, if you take a look at page seven, is this conversation around the way we build structures to transform learning and build capacity. And key to that is the way we set up and organize our human resources. And really creating a space where people are connected around themes, and their connectivity allows them to share information and intelligence more efficiently, and create more open and transparent decision-making for kids is the goal of this process. So, page eight has an example alignment structure for community health, workforce development, student leadership and learning, and operations. You'll see the operations team is really a number of different teams, whereas the community health team is really, would be a new team that was formed under the leadership of a Director of Community Health and Engagement. In the same sense, the workforce development team would be newly formed under the direction of the Director of Workforce Development, and the Student Leadership and Learning team would be, in the same sense, really closely collaborating with principals, instructional coaches, digital learning coach, Director of Special Education, to ensure that we have a common vision for student leadership and learning. Notice also, one of the conversations I've had throughout the past six months is really around athletics. Where does that fit into this conversation? And this reality that athletic leadership is a form of student leadership, and we have to be able to integrate that type of involvement and engagement into our thinking around leadership and learning. That is changing the conversation around what it means to go to school, what that means to be engaged in school. You'll find on the next few pages, I won't go through them piece by piece.
You might find, or if you'd rather go on page one.
I was just going to say, yeah, I'll just say, the next few pages are just an overview of those roles, the purpose behind them, and reinforcing what I've said.
Yeah, I didn't mean, I didn't mean that. I mean, because you all wrote, because it is, I'll be very honest with Ms. Bradley.
I mean, cause you all wrote, cause it, I'll, I'll be very honest with Ms. Bradley. So some of, reading through some of the, um, the vision document, it is a very different way of thinking, and it's one of those where I've had to read, you know, several times and let it sink in a little bit. I, I, it, it, maybe it's just a 25-watt light bulb right now, but I had a light bulb finally go on in my head whenever I saw page eight here. Uh, because to me, this starts to help make sense in my head. Because I'm starting to see how things, the more traditional names that we're used to hearing in, in, in our district, or in any district, are now starting to transform into these other, um, uh, focus areas. And, you know, being able to look and see, you know, so what does the community health team, what does the Director of Community Health and Engagement mean? Okay, so we're talking about people personnel, we're, we're talking about federal and state programs, and I'm starting to see these pieces of the puzzle kind of fit into, to areas of, of expertise or, uh, focus, you know, whatever would be the right phrase. Um, one, one thing though, and this is where my question was coming from, I started looking up here at this table, you know, this collaborative table, and I, I see us as a six, the six-member team here. I see the, these four focus areas. I see our principals here as well. I also see this NC Pride and Communications team. So I'm trying to see where each of these four fit in up here. That there, that is, that's something a little bit different, a little bit separate, or?
Yeah, I think the, I think that probably, and as you asked that question, should probably be the foundation. So the NC Pride and Communications team is really, um, will be the superintendent. Also, if I look at, uh, the role of Carla and the, uh, as the superintendent secretary, she'd be a big part of that conversation. And really, we want to blur the lines around how we celebrate each other. Um, just today, I was sharing my cell phone number with every central office employee that I met with to say, "We need to be sharing good news, we need to be sending pictures, you need to share things with me so we can share that with the district, we can share it on the Facebook page." Um, we need that information to move, and we need it to move organically, and we need it to move efficiently. Um, so I really feel like, in a sense, everyone's a part of that. If you look at, um, the position, the final, the, the last page, it talks about community and school media coordinator. This is a, this is a position that really focuses on creating a storyline and a brand, and videography that focuses on, um, really connecting through social media and being very creative around the stories we're telling in our schools and the stories we're telling as a district. This is a, this role is really at the foundation and connects to all things. Uh, we, as district employees, all feed that position, in a sense, and we feed each other those, those conversations. But, um, that, that job description is here, and this is something that is drafted and will continue to be shared and, and worked on, uh, fine-tuned over the next week. And so my, um, my goal, really due to the timing of this process, in order to ensure that we're able to start with July 1st, is approval of these positions and job descriptions at next week's May 15th, uh, board meeting.
So then what you're talking about is these, um, the four?
Five.
Four positions. Yeah, four positions, okay. Which line up then with these on page eight?
Yes.
And, and also, so what I'm, what I've, maybe here's a different way that I can say this. This is good, I've been looking for the Cliff Notes, to some degree, and, and I'm starting to see that here, I don't know about anybody else, but, you know, this, this has been very, almost overpowering to me. I feel like, okay, what am I missing here? Not that there's anything missing, it's myself, but now as I look at this, I, some of it starts to come into more of a focus for me, uh, of what it is that you've been trying to share.
It's that mathematical.
It is, it is, it's analytical, yeah.
Yeah, it really is.
Yes.
Cause it sort of reads simple to me.
It, it, it does, yeah. Uh, and as I start to look at this, it does start to make sense, cause I, I mean, I see your passion, um, which has been that workforce piece. I mean, I think that's one of the pieces that, that you bring best to this board, and I'm, I'm now starting to see that, that workforce development team, and I'm, I'm reading down through here, and I'm imagining if I was sitting in, in your seat going, "Oh my gosh, yes. Oh yes, that's what I've been talking about. Oh, and look at this piece here too, the pieces of that puzzle starting to fit together."
Well, there's, it's just so important. I mean, it is huge, um, to have this and to have that as a leadership role, um, so yeah.
Yeah. I knew you would like that. So then, would our, is this safe to say then that our takeaway on this needs to be that we need to continue to process this some over this next week?
Absolutely.
And these job descriptions that, um, page nine gives more of a visual representation of the job description on page 10.
Right.
So the facing pages go together.
Right.
Visual representation, the, the description itself.
Right.
That we need to spend time as, uh, board members looking at this, and if we have questions, or if there's a, maybe a sentence or something that we might suggest tweaks on, that we need to be getting that back to you between now and next Tuesday.
Yes, and I will say, I've collaborated with other districts that are doing some innovative work, like to look at some of their job descriptions, and, um, I, I feel confident that the expectations for these roles, if, and the responsibilities, if played out, allow us an opportunity to meet some of the goals laid out here, and it's otherwise impossible to do.
You, you had a look on your face. I thought you had a question.
No, I think I understand the specific, uh, request to, to digest over the next week, and I'll do so.
Okay. Are there other questions on this particular item? Or are you like me, some of it, you're looking at, going, "I need to take another breath and find me some quiet time somewhere." Okay. Anything else that you need to share with us on that part?
No, thank you.
Uh, then going on into item six B, which are guest comments, um, I don't know if we've got any guests, and I don't even have the little statement thing to read out there, but I think we all kind of know it. Okay, and I don't think we have any need for an executive session tonight, so, um, with that then, I think, yes, with that then, I think we would need a motion to adjourn this, uh, work session.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Breeding.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dickerson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you all for your all the time tonight.
My pleasure.
No, you were.
Don't want to stop.
You were. You were. There you go.
So, so what's with the four eastern states? She makes more sense to us.
Yes, because that's four states.
This is ready to show one to the others. This is very dark on his side. So nice. Whereas this one, these individual is, um, this is a big house. They are.
Yeah. There you go.
So, so what's with the four eastern states? She makes more sense to us.
Yes, because that's four states.
This is ready to show one to the others. This is very dark on his side. So nice. Whereas this one, these individual is, um, this is a big house. They are.
There you go.
They are.
There you go.
So, so what's with the four eastern states? She makes more sense to us.
Yes. Because that's four states.
This is ready to show one to the others. This is very dark on his side. So nice.